The last public hearing item is the sidewalk cafe ordinance. And, uh.
I'm gonna do this.
Okay.
I don't have any visual aids, so I'm just gonna stay here. You have before you a zoning, a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to establish sidewalk cafe regulations. This amendment would add a new article to the zoning ordinance to regulate sidewalk cafes in the public right-of-way. It would provide a permitting procedure for sidewalk cafes. The permit would be issued by the planning director in consultation with the public works director, the building official, the fire marshal, and the police chief. I may refer the permit to the planning commission for your consideration. It would be subject to standards and requirements regarding use, maintenance, and restoration of the sidewalk cafe area. The permit would be renewed annually, subject to a compliance review. Appeals of my decisions on a new permit would be appealable to the commission, and your decision would be final. If I referred a permit to you for consideration for a new permit, then that would be appealable to the city council. The sidewalk cafe would also be subject to suspension, revocation, or modification for any violation of the regulations or conditions. Sidewalk cafes provide many benefits to the community and enhance the pedestrian experience. However, they may also pose some problems if not carefully regulated, such as unreasonable interference with the use of public spaces, hazards to persons and property, et cetera. Currently, we have seven existing or proposed sidewalk cafes in the city, which are listed in the report. We also have approximately 20 projects currently in the pipeline, various stages of planning or construction, that potentially could have sidewalk cafes. Those are also listed in the staff report. And there may be additional sidewalk cafes elsewhere in the city in the future, in existing buildings or new ones. In particular, I think we envision sidewalk cafes along Park Avenue, San Pablo Avenue, Hollis Street, and in the Bayfront area between the railroad and freeway. The proposed ordinance was reviewed by the development coordinating committee, and then a modified version was prepared by the city's, city attorney's office, and that was reviewed and approved by the public works committee. The regulations that are before you tonight have been further revised in response to comments and concerns by the planning and building department staff. The focus of all of these, of these regulations and the various revisions that have occurred is to try to strike a balance between making the process as simple and straightforward as possible, so that we can encourage the development of sidewalk cafes, while still addressing concerns about potential problems. So that's what we're trying to balance here. I'll briefly go through some of the salient points of the proposed ordinance. Sidewalk cafes would be allowed in any zoning district in which eating and drinking establishments are permitted or conditionally permitted. Eating and drinking establishments as defined in the zoning ordinance include cafes, restaurants, coffee shops, and other such food service businesses. An application for a sidewalk cafe would be submitted to the director of planning and building, and it would include a site plan, specifications for the furniture and fixtures, photographs of the existing sidewalk and eating and drinking establishment, proof of liability insurance, a statement agreeing to defend and indemnify the city and the redevelopment agency, and the payment of the requisite fee. I would then make a decision on the permit in consultation with the director of public works, the building official, the fire marshal, and the police chief, and my decision could be appealed to the commission. As I said before, that I may refer a decision to you, in which case your decision could be appealed to the city council. Sidewalk cafes would be subject to a number of standards. I would like to note that on the die is in front of you, you have a sheet which is an addendum to this report. It modifies the proposed standards. It adds one concerning smoking, which is underlined. The proposed standards would include that the permit would have to be posted. The hours of operation would be limited to the same hours or shorter hours as the associated restaurant or cafe. There could be no food preparation or storage of food in the sidewalk cafe area. The furniture and equipment would have to be confined to the sidewalk cafe area and removed at the end of each day. At least four feet of clear sidewalk width would be required, and it could, that's a bare minimum. It may be, the city, at our discretion, may require a greater clear sidewalk width in certain situations, such as along Park Avenue or San Pablo Avenue, where there are wider sidewalks. The sidewalk cafe would have to be maintained in a clean, sanitary, and attractive condition. Litter would need to be removed at the end of each business day within a thou, within 100 feet, including out to the gutter. Live music and other performances, amplified sound and dancing, would be prohibited in the sidewalk cafe area. And the new addition is that smoking would be prohibited in the cafe, in the sidewalk cafe, and within 25 feet of entrances, windows, and vents of the associated restaurant. And finally, no changes to the sidewalk cafe would be allowed without my prior approval. In addition, if alcoholic beverages are served in the sidewalk cafe, it would be subject to additional regulations. These would include that all relevant federal, state, and local laws and zoning regulations would have to be complied with. A valid license from the ABC would be required. There would have to be a substantial physical barrier between the cafe and the rest of the sidewalk. Patrons would not be allowed to leave the sidewalk cafe with alcohol, or to sell or give alcohol to people outside the sidewalk cafe area. And the sidewalk cafe would be required to maintain full, full food service at all times, and not, and never operate as a bar, or a tavern, or a cocktail lounge. The renewal procedure, the annual renewal procedure is modeled after that for business licenses, and it would run concurrently. The permit would expire on December 31st of each year, and an application for renewal would need to be submitted. We try to make this process as simple as possible. They would simply return a form to us indicating whether any information in the original application had changed, an updated liability insurance certificate for the coming year, and payment of the renewal fee. Staff would then review this renewal application in consultation, again, with public works, the building official, the fire marshal, and the police chief, to make sure that the sidewalk cafe was still complying with all of their conditions and standards, and to investigate any complaints. If there were no problems, we would renew the permit and send them a new, a new certificate for posting. If for some reason, we should decide not to renew the permit, we would provide a detailed explanation to the applicant as to why it wasn't renewed. And in either case, the, my decision on renewal would be appealable to the commission. If for some reason either I or the commission decides not to renew a permit, then the sidewalk cafe would have to be removed within 30 days, and the sidewalk restored. Also, the payment of the fee would be considered delinquent after March 1st, and if the renewal application and fee was not received by March 1st, the permit would be considered to be expired, and a, a new permit would have to be sought, meaning that the new permit process would have to be gone through again. Sidewalk cafe permits could also be revoked, suspended, revoked, or modified by me for any violation of the regulations or conditions, and my decision on that would be appealable to the commission. If a sidewalk cafe ceases to operate for any reason, then the sidewalk would need to be returned to its original condition, to the satisfaction of the public works director at the permitees' expense. There are no fees established for this at the present time. That will require a change to the master fee schedule, but we envision these fees would be nominal, in the range of $100 to $200 for the original permit, and somewhere between $25 and $100 for the annual renewal fee. Existing sidewalk cafes that are already there, prior to the enactment of this ordinance, would need to be brought into conformance within six months, meaning they'd have to submit an application and get it approved. And this amendment would not apply to outdoor seating for adjacent restaurants in city parks or along the greenway. However, we are working on an ordinance to regulate access to private property from the greenway and city parks, and that ordinance would include provisions to regulate outdoor seating, which we expect to be substantially similar to this sidewalk cafe ordinance. We'll be bringing that ordinance to you in the near future. And with that, we recommend that the commission vote to recommend city council adoption of this ordinance to establish sidewalk cafe regulations. I know that the Chamber of Commerce has had some comments on this. I don't know if any was here from the chamber. I've exchanged some messages with Bob Cantor of the chamber. He had concerns about a couple of things I'd just like to tell you about. I'm certainly not gonna advocate for or against his position at this point, but I just wanna let you know what his concerns were. They were that the 100-foot cleanup, he felt was a little excessive, and pointed out that that could extend all the way across to the other side of the street. It was not staff's intent to include the other side of the street. It was only intended to include the same side of the street within 100 feet. He felt that should be reduced to 25 or 50 feet. He also had concerns about the music. He suggested that perhaps not live music and dancing, but some kind of music piped in through loudspeakers, or whatever might be a nice addition to sidewalk cafes and add to the ambiance of the street. We have concerns that that would be difficult to regulate, and so our proposal is just to prohibit it. Again, he's not here to advocate for that position, so I can't really tell you what, what that would entail. I believe those were his main concerns. He also had a concern about the fees, but when he then saw our proposal that the fees would be nominal, he said that was fine, and that's what they would hope for. I should also point out that we did send a copy of the staff report to the seven existing or proposed sidewalk cafes that are listed in the report. It looks like none of them have showed up here tonight, though. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you, you may have.
Thanks, Charlie. Any questions, Charlie?
I have one question, and it pertains to page five of the staff report, under the second paragraph, where it states, "While administrative procedures are not spelled out in the zoning ordinance amendment, it is envisioned that the finance department would send out renewal notices for sidewalk cafes, et cetera, et cetera." I guess my question there is, is this gonna create any problems, or uncertainty, or gray areas by not having something spelled out in the zoning ordinance?
I don't think we want to get that detailed. The, as I say, it's modeled after the business license procedure, and that section of the municipal code does not spell out the administrative procedures for how business licenses are processed.
Okay.
It only says, you know, what you have to pay and when you have to pay it. I guess a concern would be if we spell out administrative procedures in the zoning ordinance, then we couldn't change the administrative procedures without going back to the city council, which I think is a bit more than we want to have in the zoning ordinance. We did intend to try to make this as painless as possible, both for staff and for the sidewalk cafe owners, and by linking it to the, not linking it exactly, but piggybacking it on the existing business license procedure, we figured that's a way that we can remember to send out the renewal notices every year and get the applications for renewal back to staff. However, I would point out, as it says in that paragraph, and as it also says in the procedures about business licenses, the city is under no obligation to send out reminder notices. And just because we have failed to do so does not relieve the owners of the sidewalk cafes from the obligation to renew their permits.
Thank you, Charlie.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it was my concern about the live music, and I could see that live music could add to the ambiance on the street. I just wanna make sure that that live music prohibition, it says, "Shall be prohibited in the sidewalk cafe." Does that mean that in the whole cafe, you can't have?
No, only in the sidewalk cafe.
Cafe, sidewalk cafe area?
Right.
Is what you're referring to.
If the associated eating and drinking establishment had a cabaret permit, they could certainly have live music inside.
But, then could we add on that in the sidewalk cafe area, or the outside area, instead of, it, it seems to prohibit anything in the cafe from having live or amplified music.
They've got a definition under, on item F on the previous, in the resolution, that defines sidewalk cafe.
Yeah, sidewalk, that's right. Sidewalk cafe is defined as the outdoor area.
Had one more, and that's on, it's actually the next one. "No changes to the layout, design, or operation of the sidewalk cafe shall be allowed," yada, yada. Those, those peoples tend to rearrange the furniture fairly often, out on those sidewalks. One, and then I don't see any proviso for submitting a plan for those tables. I, I'm not asking for a plan, but right here, it says you can't move them without, you can't change the layout without your approval, but there's no layout to be provided.
Oh, yes, there is.
Well, no, there's specifications.
Under permit application.
No, under permit application, if you look at the resolution, page, uh.
Site plan and specifications.
Well, yeah, a site plan, dimension clearly and labeled. "Site plan shall clearly indicate the number and arrangement of tables and chairs, and any other proposed features, including but not limited to umbrellas, heaters, trash containers, railings, planters, and fencing."
Oh.
Now, you know, I mean, we wouldn't, we don't wanna become control police, control freaks here. If they move their tables around, I don't think we're gonna.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping, that this would not make them non-compliance by moving a few tables.
We wanna make sure we have the ability
Right.
To make, to, to approve any changes. So if we walk down the street one day and discover the sidewalk cafe has been moved to a completely different part of the frontage than it was before, we can say, wait a minute. Yeah.
Well, I guess the biggest problem would be expanding into the four-foot pedestrian right-of-way.
Yes, that would definitely be a concern. I might note that this is similar to the kinds of conditions we have for any use permit or design review application. Technically, they're not supposed to change anything from what you have approved, you know, without my approval. And it could be some small little thing. You know, sometimes they change stuff, and we don't say anything about it. And other times, if it's a bigger thing, we might wanna look at it. But it just gives us a mechanism to make sure we keep our eyes on it.
Any other questions, staff? I've actually got a couple, under standards, on page four, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Are you in the staff report, or the ordinance?
I'm in the staff report.
Okay.
It's also in the conditions of the ordinance. You specify that the cafe and adjacent sidewalk shall be swept weekly, and any food operation sweeps at least once a day, whether it's inside or outside. It just seemed, I'm not sure where you got the weekly standard.
I got it from the ABC. The State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control has a standard that if alcohol is served outside, it's, the area's supposed to be swept weekly.
I'd just like to see that swept daily. I mean, it's just part of operation.
We can change that.
And it would be complaint-driven. If somebody's make, leaving a mess outside, you know, the city has the authority to step in and make sure they're cleaning sufficiently. Back to the, to Bob's comment about the 100-foot distance, I am gonna ask you what you think is appropriate. I don't mind specifying a distance, and it seems like it's in the interest of the cafe to have, you know, 50 or 100 feet cleaned up as well.
There's, there's.
Where did the 100-foot?
It's somewhat, I mean, it's a round number.
Okay.
You know, it's somewhat arbitrary. We wanted it to be on the same block, clearly, and encompassing at least an adjacent storefront. 100 feet would probably encompass two or three storefronts, maybe even four storefronts, depending on how wide they are. So, a lesser distance, I think, would not be unreasonable.
For some of the commercial use, especially the fast food, there's been some discussion about problems with trash around them.
Right.
Is there anything specific in our zoning ordinance around pickup, especially for that type of commercial use?
Not.
For the use itself, right now?
Not currently.
Okay. That's it for my questions.
So, did you want to change that 100-foot?
Well, we need to open the public hearing.
Okay, okay. Yes, you're right.
Uh, any other questions?
Um, I, I have a couple of questions. I was wondering, in your definitions, looking at the sidewalk cafe, was there any discussion about the possibility of using the parking zone in certain circumstances, where there might be a narrow sidewalk, and there might be bulbouts, and there might be a protected area that the parking zone could be used for cafe space?
This would not preclude that?
No.
I don't, well, you have the word adjacent to, but I think we would interpret that to mean, you know, the entire sidewalk between the curb and the building. So it could, you know, as long as they provide a site plan that I, public works, building official, fire, police, all feel is workable, it could include the area immediately adjacent to the street?
I mean, the parking area. Some, some jurisdictions.
Oh, in the street itself?
Yeah, some jurisdictions have a flexible zone on certain streets, where they allow uses under circum, certain circumstances, obviously with some kind of protection for pedestrians.
That would not be allowed by this ordinance.
Right. I was just wondering if there was discussion about that.
Yeah. Uh, no, actually, that hasn't come up.
There's a restaurant in San Francisco, they close off the whole street there. What's that?
Well, we could do that, too.
Beldon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
I saw a sidewalk cafe recently in Halifax, Nova Scotia, where they had appropriated the entire sidewalk, and the pedestrians had to walk out in the street, around it.
Well, this would be sort of, that would, this would.
This would be the reverse of that.
I'm suggesting the flip side of that, that you would keep the sidewalk clear for pedestrians, but be able to encroach on the parking zone, perhaps, under certain circumstances.
I understand. Um, we have, no, that idea has not been brought up before.
That could be done with a special permit on a special occasion.
Well, that, that is the public right-of-way, and this does, with, with the right plan, that probably would not be precluded, right?
Well, no, this, this says a sidewalk cafe is on the sidewalk, and then it defines sidewalk. So it does not include the street.
Wow.
And I also had a question about removal of the sidewalk cafe furnishings at the end of every business day, and I'm wondering if someone has put out some attractive planters to define their cafe space? Would they have to roll in planters every day, or would, is it just talking about tables and chairs?
Well, I think that, the planter, the, the, the barrier around the sidewalk cafe would be required to be removed every day, but if they were planters on rollers, then I think they could be rolled up against the face of the building and left outside.
They're subject to being stolen.
Those were my only questions.
Michelle DeGuzman from the Economic Development and Housing Department was quite involved in the development of this ordinance, and she has a few thoughts she'd like to share.
Okay, sorry, I've been whispering to Charlie. The first thing that I wanted to address was your concern about using the parking area for, for sidewalk seating. Actually, the wording of the ordinance to ensure that the sidewalk seating is adjacent to the restaurant is actually meant to preclude the use of both the parking area or to put the seating adjacent to the street, but allow, it's sort of hard to visualize without, without some sort of, but you know, to allow the seating next to the street and a gap of the public right-of-way, and then the restaurant, which is actually fairly common in, I believe it's Mountain View. That's, and they actually have the same thing, where they allow some of the parking area to be flexible for that use. But that was, that was a little bit more significant in terms of the effects of that. So we wanted to keep it much more simple, to just put it adjacent to the, to the sidewalk cafe. And that was, that was also at the request of the city attorney, because they felt there was too much liability to have the sidewalk patrons that close to the street.
But didn't, for the Park Avenue plan that we just adopted, doesn't that include an option between the sidewalk and the curb and the planting areas to have deliberately?
No.
No, that didn't get approved?
Well, that, well.
That was never proposed, that I'm aware of.
That was not in the plan.
Are nursing schematics?
There's a, there's a so-called encroachment zone of four feet, which is between the building and the sidewalk, and that's the area where sidewalk cafes could be located.
I thought there was also an option to include.
There are four-foot by six-foot modular panel kinda areas in the sidewalk out by the curb, and those are either to be planted with street trees, or some other kind of planting, or filled in with brick pavers, which would be like seating areas, but not, I'm like benches on the street, but not, not sidewalk cafes.
Not tables.
That was never envisioned as part of the Park Avenue plan.
Okay.
And what Charlie just described for the sidewalk seating on Park Avenue is in congruence with this ordinance as well, in terms of the location of the seating. And then the second item was the planters, and actually, the, rather, if planters were being used as barriers. And the way the ordinance is envisioned is that the applicant will have an opportunity to have both removable barriers, as well as barriers that may be essentially semi-permanent, if they wanted to set something in the sidewalk, just for the, to define the area. And part of the reason for that is a removable fence, if you bring it in and out every day, can get, sort of, if it's painted metal, it could get chipped and damaged with the, the constant back and forth, so it's to help preserve that, that appearance. But the tables and chairs, and anything that would not be affixed to the sidewalk, would need to be removed on a daily basis.
We need to modify these standards, then, because the way it's written now, it says "all furniture and equipment." So we can, I mean.
Unless permanently approved.
Yeah, or semi-permanent barriers, or whatever, can remain where they are.
A lot of us worked on this ordinance.
Yeah.
That's why we're not all clear with it.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other questions? That will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Comments?
I think it's a great idea.
Absolutely. This is definitely gonna enliven the streets of Emeryville, and I think it's a great opportunity for many businesses to expand their, their ability to serve patrons, generate more tax revenue for the city as well.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that changed to the permit standards under section nine dash four point six-ish, six-ish point five, item H, that sweeping be performed daily rather than weekly. I just think it's important that when you're serving food, you clean up every day, so.
Did you want to modify that 100-foot distance?
I, I don't have a problem with the 100-foot, because if there's a trash, you know, again, it's a complaint issue.
We should probably clarify that it's on the same side of the street.
You wanna make it 20 feet or 10 feet into the street, so it takes care of the curb, or something of that sort?
We didn't want them to be required to go out into the traffic area.
Yeah.
Just to the curb.
Stuff gets thrown in the curb.
They'd have, they would have, it includes the gutter. They'd have to pick up stuff in the gutter, but not out in the street itself.
I think that makes sense.
So, somehow we'll reword this to say on the same side of the street.
Any other suggested revisions?
And you're going to clarify the language about possibility of permanent fixtures?
Yeah, that semi-permanent barriers may be, may remain.
Excellent point. The other, the, I know Starbucks has amplify, or they have the sound pumped out of every one of their locations right now, so in comply, in meeting the six-month compliance period, they're gonna turn off that amplified music?
Well, actually, this is an interesting question, because what if they take in all their tables and chairs, so they don't have a sidewalk cafe? I'm not sure there's any prohibition about having loudspeakers out on the sidewalk, otherwise.
I don't think they're gonna go that way.
Sure, they'll just turn it off.
Well, I think it's important to control the sound.
Yeah, this is an outright prohibition.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know if you wanna institute some kind of reasonable controls, but if you do, you'd have to help us out.
If somebody wanted to pipe some music outside, would they just not come to us and argue that they want that, and then it would come before?
Maybe on a special basis.
Well, or this is just flat-out prohibitive.
I think it's better if they not have.
I don't think they should allow, we're getting into all different kinds of tastes in music that way. The streets are noisy enough as it is, you know.
The day the music died.
They can go indoors.
Stay inside if you want.
They can, they can have loudspeakers inside the cafe, and open the doors, and turn it up real loud.
Right.
Yeah.
Then it wouldn't be outside.
It'll be an incentive for operable windows on the ground level.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Good, that's right.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move approval with the modifications that Jim Martin mentioned.
Okay.
And staff clarifications.
Staff clarifications, thank you.
A second.
So we have a, a motion by Commissioner Germaine, and second by Donaldson, to recommend approval with the modifications to the council?
On the motion, Commissioner Cardoza.
Aye.
Commissioner Flores.
I'm gonna abstain by companies building a couple of developments here with sidewalk cafes.
Good move.
Well, good. You'll be subject to these regulations. Commissioner Germaine?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Chair Martin? Six ayes, one abstention. We will. We will forward this to the council with your recommendation of adoption.